Buildings on this thing?
Not at this time.
Pavilions?
No, that was questioned. I did ask that question, but not at this time.
No, it's mostly for overflow parking when had their events and, you know, there may be land there for a T-ball team to play or something of that nature.
But they're not disturbing, they're not creating any more precarious areas. So there's no need for stormwater or no need for permitting right now.
And they were explaining too that if acreage doesn't see, they could be having to get involved with the EDP and MS board. So everybody with the same understanding.
I didn't know they had that much ground back there.
Yeah, they bought a nice chunk of land there when they purchased that property. And this was kind of off to the southwest corner of the property.
I attended their bonanza there several weeks ago. You couldn't, I parked over on the neighbor because I knew the neighbor and called again. That's, they do need some, they just have a lot of, you know, different events here. They have a big parking lot.
I just noticed that big parking lot they have behind there.
Yeah, that was full. That wasn't even enough. No, they couldn't handle it all. They probably had 400 people to support that I attended.
All righty. Any other changes, Mr. Davis?
No, sir, no.
All righty, a motion to approve the agenda as modified by recommendation of the county administrator.
Who moves?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed, motion carries. Purchase order log. Any questions for Tracy back there?
Tracy, I do have a question. I apologize because normally I come to you and ask you, but I missed this one. On the AutoZone Surefire engine, do we have to replace a motor in a vehicle?
Yeah, I'm sorry, but I just noticed that this morning, so thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, internal budget revisions and encumbrances.
You can approve it today if you want.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir. There are nine internal budget revision requests for your consideration. And along with the one, there is an encumbrance request. So the first internal budget revision request, there's two of them. For Department 402 County Clerk, the Honorable Tony Petrucci has requested that he be allowed to decrease line 230 contracted services by $5,100. Current unencumbered fund balance is $10,579.30 with 57.7% spent to date. An increase line 341 supplies and materials by $5,100. Current unencumbered fund balance and supplies and materials is $3,212.93. You'll see accompanying that request, there is an encumbrance request form from Mr. Petrucci for one map cabinet with 100 map sleeves. The total cost of that from Castro and Harris is $5,091. And that is being requested in accordance with your encumbrance policy.
So this is a new map cabinet for new maps?
For new maps?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. The second request from Clerk Petrucci, again, is Department 402. He's requesting that he be allowed to decrease line 221 training and education by $171. Current unencumbered fund balance is $642.10 with 58.9% spent to date. An increase line 214 travel by $171. Current unencumbered fund balance is $1,075.69 with 28.3% spent to date. Clerk Petrucci has to attend mandatory state auditorium training and wants to make sure that he has adequate money in his travel budget. The next three, six requests are from the assessor. Mr. Hess is requesting, this again is Department 406, which is the Assessor General Fund. Mr. Hess is requesting that he be allowed to decrease line 216 made into repair equipment by $473. Current unencumbered fund balance is $473.70 with 83.9% spent to date. An increase line 342 record books by $473. That account currently has $8,600 with nothing spent to date. The next request is to decrease line 212 printing by $953. That account currently has an unencumbered fund balance of $953 with 76.2% spent to date. And again, increase record books by $953. The third request from Mr. Hess is to decrease line 218 postage by $15. Current unencumbered fund balance is $15.46 with 95.1% spent to date. And again, increase record books by $15. The fourth request from Mr. Hess is to decrease line 219 building and equipment rental by $505. That account currently has an unencumbered fund balance of $505.23 with 79.8% spent to date. An increase line 342 record books by $505. The next request, again, 406, decrease line 220 advertising publications by $100. That account currently has an unencumbered fund balance of $100 with nothing spent to date. And that money is being proposed to be moved into, again, record books. And then the final request from Mr. Hess is to decrease line 341 supplies and materials by $850. That account currently has an unencumbered fund balance of $1,477.90 with 91.3% spent to date. Again, transferring that money into line 342 record books. If those six internal budget revision requests- If those six internal budget revision requests are approved, Mr. Hess intends to spend the balance, the eleven thousand four hundred and ninety-six dollars, on the necessary record books for next fiscal year. The final request is from Department 711 Emergency Services. Mr. Lilly's requesting that he be allowed to decrease line 216 maintenance and repair equipment by six hundred and five dollars. Current unencumbered fund balance is five thousand two hundred and two dollars and forty-eight cents with sixty-seven point five percent spent to date. An increased line 223 professional services by six hundred and five dollars. That account currently has a deficit balance of six hundred and four dollars and seventy cents. That's it.
Who keeps track of all this stuff?
We do.
I mean, but the computer that magically corrects it or?
They send it up. I make sure that it's in line with what's currently in munis in our accounting system, bring it to you for approval. Once your approval is, it's sent down to finance, they input it, then I'll go back in and confirm that everything's been inputted into munis so that it reflects the balances that you approved.
And then where does it go? Does it go to Charleston or?
No, these are all internal budget revisions. So the only thing that goes to Charleston is your state budget revisions that you do once a month. No, this is just all internal. And if you'll recall, probably ten years ago or so, council never approved these. It's just something that we would do internally and previous councils said they would like to know where the money's being moved because at the end of the day, it's your responsibility. So it just gives you a little bit more accountability. Yes, sir.
I'd like to be accountable.
You're absolutely.
We'd like for you to be.
Thank you.
Change in status, we have a new hire recommendation received from the Honorable Larry Hess, Assessor for Kathy Hawkins as a part-time personnel property, personal property clerk with an hourly rate of fifteen dollars and fifty cents an hour.
Mr. President, that was a typo.
That is a typo.
It should be fifteen dollars an hour.
Fifty, okay.
Yes, so the record would reflect fifteen dollars an hour instead of fifteen fifty. And this is one of our summer, summer intern positions.
Okay. Effective date to be decided, letter of resignation received from Sheriff's Department for Adam Burns effective May fifteenth, 2023. Letter of resignation received from Central Dispatch for Jason Neely effective May twenty-first, 2023.
Hey Jim, was it, is it Burns a deputy?
He was a lieutenant. He has been with the Sheriff's Department for some time. His family's from New Jersey. And he's relocating back to New Jersey and actually going to be law enforcement for one of the railroads up there. Yes, that is a lieutenant's position. Lieutenant Burns has been with us for some time.
Okay, let's see, approval of the minutes, May the fourth, everyone was present, council calendars, we're meeting here today. For, let's see, May twenty twenty-three, the twenty-second at nine thirty, Home Consortium, four P M, Eastern Pan Am Transit Authority. That was moved though. I had a Zoom meeting on that one on the fifteenth, so that was moved. And four P M Historic Landmarks, five P M Water District, nothing on the twenty-third, the twenty-fourth, one P M C B B, three P M Senior Services and on the twenty-fifth, five P M Ambulance Authority and five P M Library Board. And we will be closed next, on Monday, the twenty-ninth for Observation and Memorial Day. Anything else, changes from anybody? Hearing none, okay. Let's see, yeah. We have a bond reduction for Pebble Ridge, Section 3E, lots twenty-seven through thirty-four, one thirty-seven through one forty-seven, one eighty-six through one ninety-four, two oh one through two oh seven, the final file number zero six three dash zero four tied to file number two two oh six dash one eight five. Letter of credit number three fifty-nine, and Engineering Department has that recommendation. Any questions for Brian there? And then we have a letter of endorsement received or for the Eastern West Virginia Regional Airport Authority. Did everybody take a look at that? They're okay with it?
I remember alcohol being served the last hour, sold the last time.
It wasn't sold, it was served there for the people who had the.
Oh, the tents, the rentals.
Yes, so that was self, we didn't sell it. That was their own, they had the purpose of it for being there.
Right. So this is the same?
Same deal.
Okay, good. We're not the permit holder, the person selling it's not the permit holder.
Yep. Well, I don't know if there's any that's being sold. I think it's just going to be consumed. I think, I can get that clarified for a minute if you need me to.
They may be getting a permit this year for that, but what I was going to say is, I don't know if he's aware, he's not within the municipality. There's no zoning in that area, so he would just need a letter of no zoning from planning department. He wouldn't need our endorsement. Oh, there is only there for, oh, okay. Because I just know within the county usually.
We used to have to, I think as a council, we get not a letter of endorsement, but a letter of, we answer their request in order to sell it there, so.
If there's zoning, yeah, I didn't realize there was zoning. I didn't know there was zoning in the county other than that one neighborhood.
No, there's two areas that are zoning in the airport now.
Okay.
All righty, let's see, motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed and the motion carries. And nothing from the assessor. Board of Meeting Reports, Mr. Roy.
It was a Main Street meeting that I missed, but I got a little breakdown of what we're doing. The top priorities were basically getting the committee chairs for the upcoming year and board obligations. They reviewed two USDA loan applications for businesses on Main Street. And other than that, they said it was just event updates. And then also yesterday, attended a, what you want to call it, a forum at the library. Eddie was there as well. With a, I guess, engineers and architects about development of the library system here in Berkeley County and more so the downtown library. They broke us up into tables. There were people from the city, people from the library, different businesses. And we basically did ten questions, four minutes of questions and jotted down ideas and our thoughts of what those questions, answers could be. And I guess they gathered that together and use it as information when they're going to design a plan for the new library. They're the company that actually designed the library at Charleston. They said that project was a twenty-three million dollar project. But the bulk of that was private donations. It's pretty good. It didn't take too long, but it was a pretty eventful thing and I'd like to see the libraries being aggressive at looking at new ideas and things to do, even though they don't really have the money to do it at this time, but there's ways to fundraise and do different things.
Very good. Anything else? Mr. Bernhardt?
Thank you, Mr. President. I had a committee meeting for Region Nine. We reviewed engineering proposals, hire a new engineer, that's ongoing. There's a very preliminary discussions with the governor's office about the governor attending the June Region Nine Planning Meeting at the airport. Very preliminary because there are circumstances with housing him and because he wants a tent. Put, I guess, to hold the crowds that he anticipates coming there. But that's preliminary. And then I had a MPO meeting with Steve Catlett. Matt presented several studies that we all approved and then Steve can give a little history or details on some of the tier problem, tier problems that the MPO was running.
Very good. Mr. Catlett?
Yes, had the pleasure of being on WR on our Tuesday morning and thought it went well. A half hour goes by really quick. I could have used an hour, but I got ninety percent of what I wanted to say in, I think, so, and enjoyed that. Tuesday, had a public service sewer district meeting as well as a stormwater board meeting. Public sewer district business as usual. Both are adopting their budget for the following year, so we should get a copy of that soon. And then on the stormwater board, I thought it was today, Jeff, but I think it's, Anthony said it may not be, but soon they're going to have a meeting, the attorneys are getting together, their attorneys and heirs to get this MOU and the permit application filed and submitted. So we've asked them to fast forward that and Greg did the same to President of the Stormwater Board. Hopefully we can get, you know, within a few months, get this permit back and have it actually handed at that point, so. And then yesterday was the highlight of my week, was the MPO meeting. They do have a public notice out now on several different comment periods about the regional bicycle pedestrian plan and also the regional freight plan. And if you don't quite understand that, of course, with all the warehouses are being built in Berkeley County, I think the freight plan is something that you might want to review and look at and make comment on, but you have several weeks to do that. The highlight of the day was every two years, they, each MPO, and there's eight that represent the counties in this state, have a chance to have tier projects and they have one tier one, which is their major concern project. And they have five tier two projects that are smaller ones, less funding, of course. But they did approve and I was fortunate enough to make the motion and it passed to make the Nine West Project a tier one project for this region. That's the good news. The bad news of that is it has, funding has to be approved through the state West Virginia DOT. So, but if it's not listed as a concern and project tier one, then you get no consideration at all. So I think we're, it's a step in the right direction. Brian Carr, who we met with in Charleston, is one of the people, attends those meetings each month, he's on the MPO and he understands our concern, I think, and hopefully he'll have some clout down there to see if we can get some funds directed to alleviate some of our traffic concerns on Nine West.
As does Craig Moore. As does Craig Moore.
Yes, and I spoke to Craig about forty-five minutes yesterday about it and he's working on it too. We're looking at a bypass around Hedgesville and then trying to get the traffic from, once you get around Hedgesville into Martinsburg and have an alternate other than that, that's the concern. I mean, honestly, once you get past Back Creek, there's no traffic issues on Route Nine West to Berkeley Springs. The issue is safety issues regarding the turns and curves and all, of course. But as far as traffic issues, they only exist between Hedgesville and eighty-one and that's a four mile stretch. So it seems very logical to my mind and that we can somehow come up with funding to get an alternate route other than that to address that area and it would be a major thing. I, like I said, I'm just thrilled at this point that it's even listed as a project of concern and hopefully we'll get the attention. But we do have Craig's attention on it very much so and that could be a big help. And we've got to encourage, as you speak to our local legislators at all levels, encourage them to help us with this, put the pressure on DOT to make this a reality. So that's all I have to report to thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate your diligence on getting that moved to a priority. So that's a big deal for Berkeley County.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Pocana?
Yes, sir. I zoomed in on a property management meeting with the Development Authority. The three and four hundred building, both of those are one hundred percent rented currently. They're looking at doing some renovations, just a couple spaces, just to get them freshened up a little bit. Other than that, the buildings are in very good condition. I had planning commission meeting on Monday night, we had three public hearings. The one that kind of raised, you know, your eyebrows would be Foley Springs, which is on Suffer Spring Road. Four hundred and thirty-seven home sites, sketch plan was presented. We're already hearing from folks in that neighborhood, you know, about the traffic on the road and whatnot, so we're, I've already spoke to the state of West Virginia folks about it. Trying to get, you know, the problem there is a thirty-foot right away. That's all that they have on Suffer Spring Road. Next meeting was Parks and Rec. Pools are being filled this week in preparation of Memorial Day, getting everything up and running.
Yeah, the Health Department's been real busy doing their part with inspections on pools, that's most.
Yeah, so.
It's a time of year.
Yep.
It is. Ready or not, here it comes.
Did you miss it?
Not that part.
And, but, but the programs are continuing to grow and the finances are, they're strong. There's a, remember back, I think in February or so, we granted some money, actually longer than that ago, we granted some money to Parks and Rec for an outdoor park at Port House Farm Park. It was a, well, they just, they went and visited and then they realized that they, they have an opportunity to buy a much nicer park projects that will, they say, be a destination. I mean, it has a zip line and it's got a lot of different features to it and it's very, very nice. So they're going to add additional money to the money that we presented to make this happen. And also HD and I attended a ribbon cutting for the new trails that had just been cut in to the new property that was purchased. And we had the opportunity to thank the Roach family for securing that property until the county was in a position to purchase it. Also attended the workshop that HD spoke about with the library. And yesterday morning also, I facilitated a meeting, I mentioned this back several months ago, about a regional training facility for police, fire, EMS and the James Rumsey School. So Tracy and her gang now have the information to be able to start working on that grant. And it will be a regional asset, which will be a tremendous training opportunities for our region. So trying to work on that to try and make that happen.
And not just fire, but police as well.
Absolutely.
So that's what's special about it.
Okay, maybe there might be multipurpose grants out there to make that happen.
Hopefully.
Okay, I had a Eastern Pan Am Transit Authority meeting by Zoom. The design of the new location for the bus station is almost at a hundred percent, so that's getting ready to go out to bid here pretty soon. There was a.
It's just part of the bus station.
Yes, part of it, but most, well, it's all being designed, but they're going to release part of the bid process. The Transit Authority also, it was, I kind of got into the meeting a little bit late, I was on the road, but when I got in or was able to zoom in, I missed part of the conversation with the, a couple of the buses that they may have to reevaluate and have some issues corrected on, I'm not sure which two or three. Other than that, it's moving along.
Elaine is on the MPO with Jim and I and she chaired our meeting actually yesterday. She's the vice president, so she's a good lady.
Yep. And then there was a, I had a, oh, the contract between Harpers Ferry and the Eastern Pan Am Transit Authority was renewed and that's in very good standing with Harpers Ferry. They're very pleased with what we've been able to accomplish for them, other than when it was sent out to bid as an independent. They were having all kinds of logistic issues, so they had granted us back the contract to have that again. I think it's, I don't want to call it a no compete contract, but however, they're very satisfied with what we're doing, so they're going to stay with us to the time being.
Good. I know financially that too.
That's, that's a big boost for the Transit Authority. And what else was there? That's, that's a big boost for the, for the Transit Authority. And what else was there? I think that was it. So if nothing else, we have vacancies. Anybody want to make motions for reappointments?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, I would like to, and I'll do this as one motion. I'd like to reappoint Ruby Kern and Lynn Loveman to the Berkeley County Public Service Water District for new terms of, I think, five years each.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second, yes.
All righty. Have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed. Okay. We have a new application received for fire board for the following. Do we want to have them come in for interviews?
They have, they have a one seed.
One seed.
And if the council knows, the Fire Rescue Association typically submits three or four names and then the council will interview them. So I would recommend to the council over the next couple of weeks, we schedule an interview.
Sounds good. Tracy, okay, or Tracy, I'm sorry, Penny, you okay with that? New application received for the museum board for Helen Harris and Jody Williams Price. Bring them in for interviews too, council, whenever they're available. And a new application received from Mary Terry for the senior services board.
That's Oliver Teague.
What's that?
Oliver Teague, Mary Terry.
Yes, it is. All righty. And the next one was removed. And Elizabeth, you're here to tell us about the U.S. Department of Justice FY twenty-three law enforcement grant. I'm sorry, law enforcement agency de-escalation grants, community oriented policing services. What amount?
Good morning. So as you said, it's the U.S. Department of Justice Office of Community Oriented Policing Services. Fiscal year twenty-three law enforcement agency de-escalation grant, community policing development solicitation. So I'm requesting to apply. The potential funding source is the U.S. Department of Justice and it's for the Sheriff's Department. The duration is twenty-four months, October first, twenty twenty-three to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. The total federal request is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There is zero match required and the total project amount is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So a little bit of background, law enforcement use of force has long, long been a topic of national and local discussion, especially when a high profile, high profile case heightens community awareness. The importance of de-escalation has been part of law enforcement use of force discussions for decades. De-escalation refers to the range of verbal and nonverbal skills used to slow down the sequence of events, enhance situational awareness, conduct proper threat assessment, and allow for better decision making to reduce the likelihood that a situation will escalate into a physical confrontation or injury and to ensure the safest possible outcomes. The escalation should be viewed holistically by law enforcement agencies. The escalation includes aspects of communication and physical tactics. But it is also important to recognize the role of community engagement and procedural justice play in ensuring police community encounters that are safe for everyone. So if awarded, this grant will pay for Officer overtime, sixty-one thousand, five hundred and six dollars. An Apex Officer Virtual Reality Training Simulator Soul Source for one hundred and thirty-two thousand, nine hundred, one hundred and thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars. I mean, this includes a head mount display, universal device pistol and taser, Apex Officer Content Library, high performance virtual reality ready workstation, over one hundred thousand dynamic scenario generators, after action briefing, advanced officer analytics, Apex Report and Monitoring, Apex Officer Training Setup, among other things. It's also a course in de-escalation in person here in Martinsburg for twenty-one thousand. And then twenty-four forty millimeter launchers for thirty-four thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
Forty millimeter launchers?
Yeah, they're like a non-lethal gun like thing. And then there's rubber ball things that they shoot out of them.
That would de-escalate somebody pretty quick.
Yeah.
Sounds to me like it could be lethal.
Yeah. I forget how many miles per hour it said that they traveled, but I think it would certainly hurt.
I would think. Yeah, I just, I just, I appreciate the fact that there's money being appropriated on a federal level for this. And I am very hopeful that, that we would be successful in obtaining this grant. To be able to. I can, if you wish, but I, I just think it's very important that as a community and as, as the sheriff's office themselves have these certain skills that may in fact be able to bring a person out of a mess, down to something that, that can be handled, you know, within reason. So that we don't end up in a situation where our deputies are in a bad spot. So this is, this is a great opportunity for our law enforcement, I believe. And I, yes, sir, would like to make that motion that we approve the request to apply for the fiscal year law enforcement agent de-escalation grant, community policing development solicitation.
And I'll second it.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed, motion carries. Thanks very much. All righty. Next up is the Honorable Nathan, Sheriff Nathan Harmon and Honorable Larry Hess on out of state license plates. Who wants to go first?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Sure.
I appreciate you having us today. We've actually used that forty millimeter SWAT call out twice. And it did exactly what we wanted. Essentially saved us from having to go hand on. Not the compliance that we were looking for.
What's the range of that?
Off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you, but it is a foam, hard foam round is what it is. And we deployed it in a bedroom and, and short of a bruise on the lower level of an individual, which is the thing that this is not something in, you know, upper body or anything. But it was, it's been deployed, been used by our SWAT team and it did exactly what we wanted it to do. Compliance. It ended a, literally a three hour standoff. So it was appreciated. So out of state tags has been an issue for quite a while. One of the things I promised to do coming into office was to address this. We, we have been addressing this, but I do appreciate the recent conversations we've had, not only with council members, but Anthony Delagati and Mr. Hess's office in terms of what's a better way. So what we have accumulated is not only sticking with the yellow cards that our deputies during night shift put out on either windshield or storm doors in terms of locating out of state tags in driveways, and then following up with, with those is we educated HOA meetings. We talked to HOA presidents. I've been to several. We advise of the statutory code. We bring documents with us. We say, here's a very good introduction packet in terms of informing your out of state residents that come here. In our discussions, most recently, we've talked about the transfer or sale of real estate advisories that are in place. We've also talked about working closer with the assessor's office with the forms that they currently utilize that depict that their property has been assessed. The out of state tag has been noticed. They have a certain amount of days, which I believe is fifteen doc? Fifteen days. And then subsequently they're to notify our office. Because it's a fifty fifty effort, the assessor's office does the assessing. They identify the vehicle. The problem that they ran into for quite a while is they can't run the tags or conduct the follow-up, which our office has volunteered to do. And we get these forms either in carbon copy or in log format. And we have an individual that actually puts this in a, a system, if you will. I've been in recent conversations with the IT department. There is, has been identified a more efficient way than doing it by hand. And we are currently working on that. However, what I've noticed in doing this is that it is literally almost a full-time job, especially when it comes to follow-up and answering the phone calls, the volumes of phone calls that come in. If you can imagine having this piece of paper lay on your windshield, you wake up to go to work, you're honest, hardworking folk to call in that same day. So they need an explanation and they need an accurate explanation, someone that's well versed in the tax code and someone that can focus on the tax code and of course, the rebates that you get and stay current with the current governor's office in terms of the tax reduction. So with saying that, I think it would be prudent if I request a part-time position to do just this job. To go educate, do presentations at HOAs, to log and document and enforce and follow up with these out of state tags. There are a lot. There are thousands that we got to follow up on. I believe Doc has bought, brought in a stack of them as we speak. I don't know what the dates are on those.
These are, this is actually often what we do with the windshield and ourselves questions.
May want to come on up. Might want to come on up, Doc.
Sir, white nose a little.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
On Doc. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And to try to ease the pain of the assessor's office, Doc and I and, and Mr. Hess's office has been in conversation in terms of, you know, letting us bear that weight. So their office is not overburdened with phone calls. You know, maybe there's an amendment to the form that we need to make. I don't know. But we are really trying to be proactive about this. And the reason why I'm asking for a part-time job, which is slightly concerned because I think it is a full-time job, is to reasonably assess the workload without making it a full-time job. So that's the reason why I'm coming for you to not only tell you how active our offices have been working together to address this, you know, millions of dollars worth of problem, but to advise you the burden that both offices take with just this project alone.
Would I be right to assume that, that the financial gain would cover the?
It would be in the million.
What level of expertise do you need for this part-time job?
Well, this, this individual will fall under, I'm, I'm in hopes of falling under our tax department. And, you know, they would have to be a, a problem solver. They would have to be someone that doesn't need very, very little supervision. Regardless, I think that they need a strong work ethic. And I'm not looking for a tax expert background, but what I'm looking for is someone that's passionate about the job. That's in my mind. I mean, they are what an old coach uses, coachable, right? We can learn them. But if we do find someone that wants to do this part-time, former accountant of sorts or someone that does have a numbers background or a tax background, we would definitely entertain that.
And there's a big follow-up on software and Gary's gotten involved in the IT to help with this situation. So that person's going to have to be very versed in that, but it's going to make the job a whole lot easier to track it. So you know who's been served and who hasn't, the follow-up. I've been told the figures right now are somewhere around fifteen hundred have already been turned in. And we really haven't even started yet. That's how much of a problem it is. And I want to commend the sheriff and the assessor's office, Larry. Doc's been coming to our meetings. We've had three previous meetings. I want to commend Jeff and Anthony. We've had meetings about this. It's something that we've talked about way too long in Berkeley County and haven't addressed this. There's millions of dollars out there we're not collecting and people are fed up with it. They're honest people that pay their taxes and do it right. And I can't sit here as a council member and vote for more fees until we collect the fees and the structure that are out there. And we've got to go after this, but they're going to need help to do it. I thought it should have been a full-time position. You come back to say, let's do part-time. And I agree with that because, you know, let's see how it works first. We may get by with it. So we don't have to pay benefits and all, maybe get by having a second part-time person, but whatever it takes. But it has to be the same person. So you have consistency on it. So I appreciate it. I appreciate the fact Gary's gotten involved now because the software of it's a big key to the success of this thing. And if we all work together, I think we can do this. And like I said, right now in Berkeley County, from the personal property taxes from vehicles, it's just under eight million dollars a year. We're estimating a minimum of two more million, but perhaps as much as four more million dollars out there that's not being collected. They don't pay it because they don't want to pay the fee, but the good news is now with the state legislation, they're actually going to be able to get a rebate now and get their money back if they do pay that personal property tax on their vehicles. So it eliminates the reason why you should not do this, you know? And so, thank you, Sheriff, Larry, Doc, Gary, Anthony, Jeff. It's something that I think we can make it work and go do it right, but we want to do it right. Okay? I think we need to get an educational thing set up where we go out in the community and explain to them what we're doing and why, and that you can get the rebate. And there's no reason we can't distribute this information out throughout the whole county through various sources. We hope to go to the attorney office that do lands, property closings and let them pass out the thing at the closing and, and just educate the public on this. But the school board is excited about it because they're the ones, obviously, anything we collect, seventy-eight percent of it goes to the school board. We're sitting here talking about later today, resource officers for our schools, but we had to have funding to pay for them. Well, here could be the source to do that. And we're going to get twenty-one percent of the money collected. So it's going to be more than enough to cover the cost of any additional help that it's going to require. So. So, but I commend everyone that's been involved and we need to do this. The public expects us to do this and we need to follow up on it and do it.
Okay. Any other comments? All righty. Mr. Hess, have any comments you want to add to or?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, well, what else? I think everything that's said, out of state tag. But since I was elected, I've worked with these out of state tags. That was one of the things I wanted to do. Because everybody complained about it for as long as you can remember. You don't want that. So we started when they passed the bill back several years ago that would allow us, the assessor's office, to put that ticket or that slip on somebody's vehicle to say, call us within fifteen days. Let us know if that vehicle was registered here or, I mean, it's not registered here, but if they live here or not, just let us know the situation, you know? That's all we were allowed to do. And we had these forms made up. We sent them out, had our appraisers put them on vehicles. And the calls would come in, but we had no means to run a tag, to follow up on any of that. We, so it didn't really go very far, you know? Now that we've got the sheriff's department involved and we've got the council involved, we've got, this is the first time I've seen everybody involved with this out of state tag thing that we can really get something done like that. So we've started passing these things out. And like you say, we've worked with the sheriff's department, got a couple of meetings and we've got together. We've passed out what we've had in thirty, over three hundred of them just now to our appraisers. They've sent back probably over two hundred. And I agree with Mr. Harmon that this is a full-time job. And this is what I thought we should be doing it from, from get-go. We should have a full-time person from the assessor's office and I'll hire somebody and set up an office in my office. If the sheriff can have somebody in their office that can run the plates, that side of it, we can take care of putting the things on, on the vehicles and following up on that. Because there's a lot of work's got to be done after that. It sounds easy. You just put a ticket on somebody's windshield. But you need to follow up on that when they call in. You need, you can't go back out and put another one on the same vehicle. You need, you can't go back out and put another one on the same vehicle. You gotta know whose vehicles were, they've been put on, so you can track that. There's a lot of stuff's gotta be done, follow-up on those. And, you know, there's a lot of work, so. I'd be willing to put a full-time person in my office to do this side of it. Our appraisers are doing it right now, but I've only got three full-time appraisers in the field and, you know, with all the new construction we've got in the county, that keeps them real busy. And I've had a couple of my guys use computers that, you know, this isn't a job, we shouldn't be doing this, but at any rate, the code says that we do put them on the windows, that's what we're doing right now. Everything seems to be working right now. This is, this is coming together very, very, very well. Everybody seems to be wanting to work with this, get this thing going. And it's like Mr. Kat said, there's hundreds of, six thousand, you know, they're everyplace. I had an appraiser go in at some of these the other day, we handed him out 25 of the pound, he comes back the same day in this one subdivision, filled out every one of those 25 sheets. And they're, I mean, you know, they're everyplace. When people come in here and they buy something and they're coming in from, you know, out-of-state and a lot of times they just don't know that they need to transfer the tag in 30 days. We've got on our transfer sheets now that we've updated those, like when somebody buys a property, we send out a transfer sheet, let them know that, you know, they need to let us know what they're doing with the property. We've got that definition of the code or what they have to do, register their vehicles within 30 days. And we've got it on our website. But I think this thing should really be stepped up to the point where we actually have a registration office for the county, a county registration office, that we would have people in, like somebody from my office, somebody from the sheriff's office. And it's a combined effort that, you know, that everybody's together and we're working on these out-of-state tags. You've got somebody to call, you've got a, I've got a vehicle I can give, I've got two vehicles I can put out there. And we can hire, I think it's a full-time job. It should be something that's all put together and maybe an office set up just for that. We can lock these things out. And this time we got everybody together, I think now's the time to really do it and do it right.
Yeah, we don't want to do it halfway. We want to do it fully and do it right. The problem now with the assessor's people that are using now is they go to the new construction, but they only go to existing homes once every three years. Where another person gets on board now, we can go back and there's people that have been living here five and six years that have never changed their tags and have kids in our school system. And it irritates the heck out of our community, gratefully so. And so we've gotta have the personnel to follow-up on that as well as follow-up once you give the initial citation, to know to go back in 30 days and see if it's done. And I, whatever we need to do, I want to make the motion that we move forward with this. I like it as far as the part-time, I don't know Larry if you can do it with a part-time person or a full-time, but we need to provide them with the resources to make this happen.
What I recommend to that, I would recommend to the council that someone develops a job description.
Yeah.
Because you typically don't approve a position until you have something in hand.
Right.
Once you have that job description, then you can figure out the cost of it. Gary, I have one question. And I have, and I apologize, I haven't been involved in conversations. We took over GIS with house numbering and things like that a couple of years ago.
About eight years ago.
Is there any way we can marry, you know, and I don't know where this position and I don't, I'm not disputing that the position's need, I'm just not sure where it should be held. Is there any way we can marry GIS as this, I mean, I don't know, I'm asking you.
That's kind of where the sheriff is going. So first and foremost, know this, if you own a piece of Class II real estate, you don't have a personal property bill, chances are you haven't rented a vehicle. Because we all know you can't live here, live in a house and get around without a car. So there's a real easy list to be developed that neither one of these folks have the staff member to do. But we could tell you today, we can give you a generated list, wait a minute, Class II, you live there, it's real estate, but you don't have personal property. Probably here...
Could that trigger then...
An inspection?
An inspection or a visit, but then if they do not have, get a personal property, then that, would that consider them as a tenant and then Class III the property?
That'd have to be...
You can...
Be hard.
You know...
Okay.
One of the things with that is you can live in Frederick, let's say, and you have a full-time residence in Frederick. You purchase a property here like you'd be in Woods Resort, let's say, as a recreational You don't have to register your vehicles here.
Right.
They would still be registered in Maryland, but you'd own property in Burke County and you wouldn't have any personal property, technically. So there's examples like that that you run into.
But still with that, that piece of recreational property, that would be considered Class III, wouldn't it?
No, it'd be Class II. Recreation property is Class II. They say in the Class II property. Yep.
There's a lot of properties like that, but there's also 10 times more that aren't in that classification. And certainly, it may even go beyond personal property that's not vehicles. It could be other things as well, boats and this and that, that they're not paying their taxes on. So, you know...
So, yeah. So to kind of, to Alan's answer, the question, I think it's a team effort between the county council, the assessor and the sheriff. So that's the exact plan. Get the job description, lay out the business plan and make it happen.
I would ask this, that between the three departments here, IT and the sheriff and the assessors, y'all sit down and get it worked out and get the job description, the plan exactly what you want. And whether it's part-time, which I like, or whatever, and then come back and present those to us.
Yeah, part-time, two part-times.
Yeah, and well, I can assure you, we're gonna find the resources to make it happen, so.
Yeah.
It's gonna pay for itself easily. It'll take a year, a time you get them in the books and collect it, but it's gonna pay for itself. And it's gonna help the school system and potentially help us with having funds for resource officers that really excite me about this, so.
And the educational portion of this is, I think is really important, that notify these folks, look, you're on notice. You know, if you're violating our state law, then you need to get in compliance and make the proper changes to your registration. I'd really like for people to have that opportunity before you.
And the state has helped us tremendously with the rebate thing.
Absolutely.
I mean, that just eliminates the reason why you, your kids, yeah, there's no reason not to do it now, unless you're too daggone lazy to file for the rebate, that's all I got to say, so.
Usually whenever there's money involved, somebody will find a way to save it. I'd like to think that they would, so. Okay.
So the consensus of the council's moving forward.
I would say, move forward with the job description and we'll go from there.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Or multiple jobs.
I have one comment about the school board. They get, you know, 80% or so of the money. When you register your child at the school board, you know, every year, you take your kids over and say, you know, we're registered right here, and here's my address. I don't think the school board is asking them if they have a registered vehicle registered in the county. And I think that's a thing that they should be doing. And it may take a legislative, you know, to get that started, but that would probably eliminate a lot of those because if you have to show a registered vehicle, because you're a resident here, you should have a registered vehicle here. And I think they should require that when you register your children at the school board. And I don't know how that's gonna, you know, be put together, but I think that would help a lot.
We've talked with that, about that, with them, and it's something about legality thing, but it can be worked out. And actually, Councilman Gogan and I are meeting with them next week and this is one of the, one of the major topics is the tag thing and how you are gonna benefit from it the most, can you help us now?
Exactly.
Because the thing that irritates the community the most is, is when they go and drop their kids off at school and see all the out-of-state tags dropping their kids off, that's the one that gets everybody because...
We hear that all the time.
And it's time for us to address the issue, so thank you so much.
That's just the ones. What about the ones that are riding the bus?
That's what I'm saying, but, okay.
All right.
Okay.
All righty. It's break time here, we're gonna take a break for 10 or 12 minutes. Thank you.
And I'll let Director Costella correct me if I'm wrong. The ambulance authority has verbally, if they have staff available, they are still part of this, and still very integrated into this. In the event that this would get deployed, so that they would have staff, and they have been supplying some of the materials on the truck that don't expire, such as cars and bandages and things like that, tree lodge kits, so they're still involved in this with this resource.
Just in Berkeley County, or if it goes outside the county? Are you talking about just in Berkeley County?
Yeah, I would refer to Berkeley Costella on that. I think the MOU with the state has is if we have to deploy outside of our median area, there is a reimbursement source that we go through the state for anything that's not utilized within our county. So it wouldn't be Berkeley County picking up the burden of the cost if we were, say, hard ambulance or something.
But you're, you're going to go regardless of where it is?
If, you know, it's much like the COVID testing, we got a call within, what, 12 hours, and people trained and ready to handle those things. It's, it's just a matter of, you know, we have to look at our workforce, because of course we're in vacation times and things like that. You never want to drop a load percentage, but if you can help, we will. And usually that's a temporary thing until you get onto the ground and you can start to consolidate their people and give them an option to get their folks somewhere.
In the MOU, sir, we will not be seeking reimbursement for any of the supplies that we supply to the community and region. There's a dollar amount that we are going to spend annually to upkeep those supplies. We would not seek reimbursement.
So some of the supplies wouldn't be used until you figure out what the mass casualty is, I would assume, vaccines and?
Absolutely. We have to maintain because there are expiration dates on IV fluids, catheters, et cetera. We would maintain those in our stock and have those readily available should the need arise and be ready to go on us.
And although the ambulance authority is not a partner to the MOU, this, it's an important, it's important to point out that this is a partnership between the ambulance authority and WBU and the county, and certainly would benefit us. You know, let's use that, that, that large vehicular pileup on the interstate a couple of years ago. Roll this unit out, I mean, you could do a lot of the triage rate on site. Hopefully it would alleviate maybe some of the transports to, to the hospital. So, I mean, this is kind of a, a win-win-win for, for everybody.
Is there a magic number that defines a match?
No, there's not. It's in the discretion of the personnel on scene requesting. If they need additional resources, we're going to supply them, whether it's-
Something about what could normally be handled through the regular services, I assume?
That's exactly what the definition of mass casualty is.
Right. It's a wonderful thing, for sure.
And I would venture to say that, and I've heard this from a state representative of the office of emergency management, that Berkeley County has the, I want to say, the best maintained and deployable unit that has been dispersed across the state. So I think you, there was nine of these units after 9/11 that was strategically placed across the state. The one we had in Berkeley County is the most deployable and in the best shape.
Would you go outside of this eight-county region, if you recall?
Typically, if someone needs help, we, we give that help.
Yes.
Trailer is now sitting in 29, the truck is sitting in our facility.
Okay.
We would make this available, obviously, to our region and locally, not just for mass casualties, so the incident command center as well, that we will be happy to support any IT needs the county has related to, for the computers, et cetera, the need of that, that we also use it as a medical command center, not just mass casualties.
I was gonna say, that was my next question. I thought it had command center capabilities to it also.
Who, who would staff it?
So, I'll let Donnie speak on that, because there is, there is some mention of that in the MOU. In the event that we had, and Donnie, correct me if I'm wrong, in the event that we had a mass casualty event, Donnie has stated that they could possibly, if they're not overwhelmed at the hospital, have staffing available, because that is their primary concern as a hospital, but if they had that staffing available, they would be able to deploy staffing toward this.
So this is phase one of our two-phase approach to our regional response, having a MOU established. In the near future, we are given permission from the state to train some of our surgeons and DED attendants that would be on-call, if you will, and available in the event of a mass casualty, to assist our EMS colleagues and firefighters on the scene with triage or care of patients on the scene.
So if you had to go to Hampshire County, for example, you would pick up people in Hampshire County to assist you, I assume?
We would provide that service to them in Hampshire County. If there was an incident in Hampshire County, we would be notified. If it happened tomorrow, it probably would just be Randy and myself going to assist and provide the additional resources that one of our fellow counties would need. Not so much medical staffing tomorrow, but again, supplies and equipment.
And I'll let Director Costello, correct me if I'm wrong, the ambulance authority has verbally, if they have staffing available, they are still part of this, and still very integrated into this. In the event that this would get deployed, so provided, they would have staffing, and they have been supplying some of the materials on the truck that don't expire, such as claws and bandages and things like that, triage kits, so they're still involved in this, with this resource.
Just in Berkeley County, or if it goes outside the county? Are you talking about just in Berkeley County if that were to happen?
Yeah. I would refer to Burke to Costello on that. I think the MOU that the state has is if we have to deploy outside of our immediate area, then there is a reimbursement source that we can go through the state for anything that's not utilized within our county. So it wouldn't be Berkeley County picking up the burden of the cost if we were, say, hard.
But you're, you're going to go regardless of where it is?
If, you know, it's much like the COVID testing, we got a call within, what, 12 hours, and people trained and ready to handle those things. It's, it's just a matter of, you know, we have to look at our workforce, because, of course, we're in vacation times and things like that. You never want to drop a low percentage, but if you can help, we will. And usually, that's a temporary thing until you get onto the ground and you can start to consolidate their people and give them an option to get their folks somewhere.
In the MOU, sir, we will not be seeking reimbursement for any of the supplies that we supply to the community and region. There's a dollar amount that we are going to spend annually to upkeep those supplies. We would not seek reimbursement.
So some of the supplies wouldn't be used until you figured out what the mass casualty is, I would assume? Vaccines and-
Absolutely. We have to maintain because there are expiration dates on IV fluids, catheters, et cetera. We would maintain those in our stock and have those readily available should the need arise and be ready to go.
And although the ambulance authority is not a partner to the MOU, this, it's an important, it's important to point out that this is a partnership between the ambulance authority and WBU and the county, and certainly would benefit us, you know, excuse that, that large vehicular pileup on the interstate a couple of years ago. Roll this unit out, I mean, you could do a lot of the triage rate on-site, hopefully it would alleviate maybe some of the transports to the hospital. So, I mean, this is kind of a win-win-win for everybody.
Is there a magic number that defines a mass?
No, there's not. It's in the discretion of the personnel on scene requesting. If they need additional resources, we're gonna supply them, whether it's-
Something about what could normally be handled through the regular services, I assume?
That's exactly what the definition of mass casualty is.
Right. It's a wonderful thing, for sure.
And I would venture to say that, and I've heard this from a state representative of the Office of Emergency Management, that Berkeley County has the, I'm gonna say, the best maintained and deployable unit that has been dispersed across the state. So I think there was nine of these units after 9/11 that was strategically placed across the state. The one we had in Berkeley County is the most deployable and in the best shape.
Would you go outside of this eight-county region, if you recall?
Typically, if someone needs help, we give that help.
You're saying across state lines as well?
Absolutely.
They would request, they would make the formal request to Randy, and then Randy would reach out to the county administrator and the council to get authorization to do that. They've done that in instances where they might have needed, like Swiftwater Rescue, that's the big one that comes to mind. We, it's not unusual during the course of a year to get a request to put them on standby.
And we don't stand by if there are Texas, Louisiana, Mississippi, or floods, we would have, we would request and cancel this. You know, Brandon, that request, the first one, stand by.
Yeah, I could imagine a flood in southern West Virginia or something like that could call you.
Okay.
So there is a process to go through when we go outside of, I'll say, our area, but typically, we just don't say that someone is-
Bless you.
-tried to accommodate that.
Do we need a motion to approve this?
Yes. Yes, sir. Give the, the council president the authority to sign, please.
I, I so move.
A second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed. Motion carries. I'll sign right here.
Thank you very much.
And if the memo of understanding needs modification, then you'll modify it to-
Once we're ready to approach phase two with some medical staffing, we'd like to come back and add to it in that hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much. Thank you very much.
Do we need to scan it in or anything?
Hey, you want a copy?
Are you junior? Third, you're the third. Your daddy's James. Your daddy's a good friend. He's a wonderful man. I hope you're half the man, either.
I guess.
I'm keeping. He's a good man.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up is Brian Costello, Executive Director of Berkeley County Emergency Ambulance Authority and the Special Emergency Ambulance Service Fee Ordnance.
Good morning, sir. Good morning. As you guys have received in your packet, you should have received two copies of the ordinance. One is the marked-up copy that was worked on by a county legal with some input from my folks, and then what we call the clean copy that would require your signatures. This is our, I want to say, eight times before you, previously, you had approved the changes to move forward with a non-residential fee, which we are now doing. We're about two weeks behind our timeline, but I feel very comfortable with that. And subject to any questions that you may have, if you would like me to walk through the various pages here that we've done, some of this redlining, I'd be more than happy to do that. There's very minimal stuff stricken, except we'll get to page four. You'll notice that we got a little bit more in-depth as to the residential living unit, as well as included the information as to non-residential properties and how that goes there in the very first paragraph under the Special Emergency Ambulance Use of Service fee. Moving down into section one at the bottom of page four, you'll see that we stricken the information as it pertained to the two-year phase-in of the fee increase. There was no reason to keep that in there. And then we've also added some verbiage to delineate between residential user and non-residential. Moving on to page five, at the top, you'll see that we've included the statement for the homestead exemption that you previously approved. So that has been included. We've also included a brief few words there in reference to the qualifications to receive that homestead exemption and how many exemptions a resident would be entitled to. Just like our exoneration, if they own more than one structure, they get one exoneration. If they own multiple structures, then they have to, you know, pay the full fee on that. Same thing with the exemption. They get the exemption for the living structure that they occupy. Their rental properties would not receive that exemption. Further down, you'll see in addition as to the Special Emergency Ambulance Use of Fee imposed upon the ordinance for non-residential property, that's spelled out a little bit more, it delineates their year. As you know, residential begins in July, the non-residential will be a January to December calendar year deal there. So moving on to the bottom of page six, you'll see the addition of the non-residential property fee structure, how it begins. Again, it's reiterated there. And then we move on to our last page, which is signature page, there's not a whole lot, that's just a continuation. Now, the fee structure itself, which we have previously approved, will be attached as an addendum to this and will be part of what goes out to the businesses, the non-residential folks in the community. So, subject to any questions that you may have, I will-
Legal has reviewed it and-
Yes, Jeff worked on this for a number of weeks and sent it to us, and matter of fact, a lot of that is as marked up, based on recommendations and conversations back and forth.
The $25 homestead exemption, that becomes effective this July?
July 1, yes, sir.
And then the non-residential fees become effective January 1st?
Yes, sir.
1/24.
Yes.
Does that work on the billing of that?
We've added staff to our billing. We will send out our household bills, and you'll have a six-month window, and then we'll rotate into the non-residential, and we'll continue to work that piece. If we want to get a little bit more, I have both Cassie and Joy. Cassie loves to talk. Any, anything input there, Cassie?
I mean, Norman, the residential comes out the same time as your tax stuff does, obviously, and so-
Yes, sir. I think the thing was, is the residential comes out when your tax stuff does, and the non-residential, they wanted to do because of businesses' taxes and how they work those things on a calendar basis.
On a calendar year, that makes sense.
Jeff, you okay with it?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. Any further discussion? Look for a motion?
I made that motion that we approve the new fee structure, non-residential fee structure for the ambulance authority.
Can we all sign that one, right?
Yes.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. Motion carries. Got it here, but I think a couple other ones have to sign it here, too.
And we'll need a copy for that.
And we'll want a copy of it, yeah. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, next up is the Honorable-
Chad.
I'm sorry.
Again, thank you.
All right, next up is the Honorable Sheriff Nathan Harmon, request for school resource officers. Sheriff Harmon.
Morning, Jim.
So-
Now that we found a way to pay for this.
So it's been no secret, I don't think, that I've been very vocal about school safety in recent times. That has been one of the department's priorities. We've been blessed enough with three SROs who are very much enjoying their positions and their passion for those positions have showed in their work product. We've implemented a Berkeley County Safe Schools Protocol for any threats that are received, which requires, without going into too deep a detail, additional presence, not only at the target school, but the surrounding feeder schools as well. Obviously, for the size of the county, the projection in growth, the rumors of additional schools being built, it definitely makes sense to increase our school resource officers or prevention resource officers or whatever they're being titled. They are school resource officers. They are actively socialized with the kids, they establish relationships with the kids, they network with the kids, and that's a vital part of their job, as well as the administration. I've been active in conversations with the superintendent as early as yesterday, as well as other stakeholders in terms of their opinions and providing, and conduits of funding and providing SROs. I've spoken to the school board members, and President Murphy has announced funding for three SRO positions. The issue that they are filtering now is, is where exactly do they go, and what will that look like in terms of an MOU, and things of that nature. Whether one goes to the city and two come to us, I think it is fair to say that two, at a minimum, will come to us. So I am anxious to see that. I just wanted to make sure the council was well aware of the efforts and that are going on to increase our school resource officers. There is conversation about another organization that is piloting a program in the state that is providing retired officers. And without going into too much detail, because me and the superintendent are working together to potentially bring that here to this county, where we could possibly implement that. We have applied for grants, the community justice, or, I'm sorry, the Justice and Community Services Grant that provides $25,000 per SRO. Tracy and I are working on that, so we won't, even if we do venture into retired officers or a project of that nature, we will still actively work on the sworn officers for, like high schools. The school has been very adamant, school admin has been very adamant to ensure that our high schools maintain a certified office, and I don't disagree with them.
What about middle school?
Well, that was the next step for the awarded positions, is to make their-
If you got to, where are you, where are you saying they're gonna go?
Yes, sir. North and south.
North and south middle?
No, sir. North district, south district. So Musman Middle and-
Because there's quite a few, especially middle schools now, so.
Yeah. You know, ideally, we would love to fill those, but I think the idea, at least, the projection would be they'd be housed, they're headquartered at a middle school, Spring Mills and Musman.
Spring Mills and Musman.
Yes, sir.
Well, the advantage of Spring Mills, it's close to all those other schools that's on campus.
Yes, sir. And, and let's not negate the ability to float around. Our SROs currently, you know, I'll use Deputy Strickler, for example, she goes to Mill Creek, she goes to the middle school, she goes to Jaredstown Elementary, she goes to Mountain Ridge. So they are active, actively moving around. So regardless of where your home base is, they're moving.
Do, do we get the thing resolved with the existing ones at the high schools now in terms of salaries and stuff?
No, sir. We just want to point out that county's currently providing the three SROs in the absence of a contract. There is no active MOU in place. The, other than the MOU that is proposed to the county, the reimbursement rate was $52,000 for 200 days a year. We did the calculation based on the three SROs that, that were assigned to this school, and the average cost for, for an SRO for 200 days was $74,073. We proposed two different amendments to the, to the MOU, which the school board rejected. So we have no MOU in place. We continue to provide it. We are only getting reimbursement $52,000. So I think between now and the next, and there's only two weeks left in the school year, I think the school year ends, the, end of May.
Next Friday.
Um, I, I would recommend that, in the absence of, of the need of an SRO for the next couple of months, that that should be resolved. $60,000 isn't going to cover your costs.
So how many do we have now? Do we have one for every high school?
We have three.
Martinsburg does, Martinsburg High, and then Nathan covers the three county-
Spring Mills and Edgesville.
Yes, sir.
New positions would start into middle schools?
Yes, sir.
Start this fall, I assume, this next coming fall.
That's the idea. I've, I've got one pre, one certified officer that's, we would advertise specifically for this position. I've already, when the council awards the positions with the school, once they work their issues out, I already have at least one of those already dedicated to a certified officer that's willing to come in.
I say, hey, I'm talking about that, you could use retired officers as opposed to certified officers, possibly, correct?
That is an avenue that myself and Superintendent Stevens are looking into.
Looking into. If that were the case, it would, it would probably be less costly than if it were a certified.
Oh, absolutely.
For sure, so.
Would you probably put those in the elementary schools?
I would finish up with the middle schools first, and because of their availability to float, I would subsequently assign them a second or third school. At the end of this, as you project forward five years, I mean, I'm really looking at a SRO division, School Safety Division for our department.
The additional training, is there a requirement for that for the schools?
There's an annual requirement. Kevin Barney was the regional SRO representative for our area. He's a plethora of information. I have required our SROs to go annually to this training. I believe last year it was held in Willing. And they are participating in what's called the, and will be certifying as instructors in the Law Enforcement Against Drugs and Violence Program, and be, and they will go around those schools and talk to the school.
Do any, that you know of, do any of the school service employees ever attend any of those, too, or just law enforcement?
The first-ever state school conf, safe, school safety conference was held in Charleston just last year that I attended, and Deputy Superintendent Dr. Branch attended. I generally see some of the executive admin at times at meeting.
I was thinking more of the boots-on-the-ground ones in, in the schools themselves, teachers versus personnel. I wasn't thinking to add that on, but that would attend sort of this A training class, too, to be more cognitively aware of, you know, sounds.
The good news is, is I think for the first time ever this July 27th, we're having a large-scale training event where we are taking it to the educators and teaching them about emergency preparedness.
That'd be good. Okay. Motion to approve?
I have another question there.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
If, if, so what are we asking here? That if we furnish two more resource officers, up to five now, that two would be assigned as middle school?
Yes, sir.
It's up to us and work out the MOU with the school board in terms of reimbursement, but what's it gonna, are you gonna have to hire two more people to do this, I assume?
I'm gonna advertise specifically for certified officers.
Yeah.
So we can have them spun up, trained prior to the next school year.
Yeah.
That's the goal. The only thing I'm asking today is not only make the council aware of our efforts and what's coming, I'm not asking for, to approve the two positions, I'm asking to be prepared to potentially approve the two positions, once the school is done working out whatever they need to work out. And I'll, I'll make sure I'll, I get to work to the council in terms of when they do make the final decision. I just wanted to make the council aware of that.
So you're saying we need an MOU, or we just need consent?
I think the, what you need to do today is, the consensus of the council is to expand the, the number of SROs from three to five, which would, which would require, once the sheriff comes back, an increase of the uniformed deputies from 67 to 69, pending a satisfactory MOU between the, the Board of Education and the council.
I think it's too important an issue not to, consensus to move on and work out the MRO, MOU with the school board.
Well, you didn't receive the, the MOU last year until September. You were already, you know, into the school year. This gives you the opportunity, and I know, you know, Councilperson Catlet mentioned that, that he and Vice President Go can, I'll be with the, some school officials next week. Great time to start that dialogue.
Yeah, I agree. And you got my vote.
Okay.
I appreciate, I appreciate your willingness to work with the school system to do this. Nathan, it's, it's, nationally, it's maybe the top topic in the, in the nation right now, is school security, so. And like you said, hopefully we've got the resources to do all the schools. That would be wonderful, so.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, you got the consensus.
I appreciate it, thank you. And I'll return when I hear the verdict from the school board. And I'll return when I hear the verdict from the school board and what their final decision is.
Yeah, I hope they realize the urgency of this matter as much as we do.
They do. And just before we close out this topic, the local emergency planning committee, I advocated for them to start a safe school, or school safety subcommittee in which they've made myself and Mr. Comer, who's the Director of Health and Safety, Chair and Vice Chair. In this committee, we will be talking about issues, front-end prioritizing issues, and at least get a better roadmap together on how to best move forward.
Okay. Everybody's good. All righty.
Thank you.
And the next up is reclassification of kennel cleaner to animal control officer.
Yes, I think we'll be talking about it here very shortly, but I have experienced some unexpected resignations, and of course, there was a termination involved that required our other animal control officers to fill in their shifts and stand by for call. If they, they work from eight to 11, anything after 11 to eight in the morning, they're on call. So when they're called out, and that includes the city for various calls, they, they have to go. So as I thought about the duties of an animal control officer, they, that is part of their duties. And I think it would offer our department a lot more flexibility if that part-time person was classified as an animal control officer, be trained the same way, equipped the same way, but be able to flex in situations that, where they're needed.
But did you continue to be part-time or you wanted to move to full-time?
Um, yeah, very much. Now we're approaching the out-of-state tag issue. I mean, we had six last year, we have seven animal control officers this year. That number appears to work adequately currently. Obviously with the growth, that's going to be an issue, but you know, I feel at this point in time, a, a part-time will help stop the bleeding on the overtime issue that I have.
How much does the city contribute to the animal control?
Nothing.
They quit?
No, when I was there, it was a little bit and they were threatening to quit.
We, we billed them for a number of years and they've reimbursed us and then it was a flat amount. And we tried to, we tried to change the billing formula based on the number of calls and we were able to actually identify the number of calls for, for the three-year period inside the corporate city limits and outside. We took the total cost of ant, providing animal control and, and used that formula for reimbursement. And then the city council came back to us and said, well, the residents of the county, by code, we have to provide animal control to them at no cost. So we haven't received any reimbursement for a number of years. Yeah, I shook my head too.
Um, my intention, I've had my first conversation with Mr. Goldman just as early as last week, and we're, we're, we have so far a really good relationship and I intend to approach the topic.
Sheriff, I'd be happy to give you the folder on that if you ever-
I would appreciate it, yes, sir.
I'll send it over to you.
There's a wild animal problems within the city and I don't know how often you'll get called for that, but-
Wild animals?
Yeah, like smokes and-
Maybe Kevin could, he's back there standing or stoic with his gray beard. Come here, Kevin.
How often you go into the city, Kevin?
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Calls in city can vary. I mean, it can be four, five times a day, you know, it can be five times a week based on murder call itself. Just like in county, there's also a system with EMS and police and situation of that nature. So it varies from, it can be, you know, a few times a day every day going to be back where you are handling something that's-
Joe, contract with private companies in dark in terms of other things other than dogs? Like if it's were a wild animal or a skunk or something?
Uh, that's mainly, that's mainly DNR.
DNR handles those?
But there's certain things that, I thought they even have private contractors that come in and handle this world.
There are, there were two, there's one that mainly now, but, but those are, if it's some, a problem of someone's residence and they need something there, yeah, they can call them, but of course they, you know, we make them understand that this person will bill you directly, you know, because it is a private contract. But for the most part, if it's anything like that, we direct it to DNR first.
Okay. You certainly don't handle that. You just handle dog, don't you, I would assume?
I know, I know when they had a big vulture problem, like DNR came-
I mean, we sporadically, you know, assist, you know, we don't handle calls ourselves in that aspect or the assistance we're dealing with.
I keep in mind that there's like literally, I think, three DNR officers through the entire region.
Yeah.
They're, they're feeling the pain just like all the, our other races.
They are stretched.
The vulture thing has become a huge problem and I've gotten a lot of calls about that. And of course, they're protected species as well. So, you know, you can't just go out and shoot one.
Hey, you know, and I'd be the, open to the idea because like Chief Jones said, that sporadically, they have to deal with things that are DNR related, but maybe some additional training certifications in the area and wildlife would, would be beneficial in what we see the most of maybe in the city.
So you just need a motion to reclassify this one individual?
Yes, sir.
I so moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll say.
Any further discussion?
One, one quickly, is it going to be done within budget? Are you gonna have to adjust compensation any?
This year? I'm talking about, yeah. It doesn't exist in the budget? I think he is putting contingency, right?
It, it's in contingency. So are you, are you recommending the amount that's in contingency be moved over July 1st? You're not requesting any additional budget?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. So that can be done through state budget revision, Gary number, actually, yeah, number two. Cause you'll do the unencumbered fund balance and then two will be started in positions.
Have a motion, second, and any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed, motion carries? Okay, and next item up is overrun of overtime.
I don't think it's been any secret for the past year that we've been in multiple discussions, phone calls or in person, behind closed doors, and even in front of you all as late as February of this year in terms of the issues with the budget. But at the same time, we are growing, we are a dynamic agency, and I'll make no bones about it, we have done quite a bit to try to stay lean with the usage of our overtime. We look for any unnecessary usage of overtime, we address that. Any opportunities to, in terms of traffic saturation for the all-traffic solution devices that we have around, we use governor highway safety monies for that. We have went to a 12-hour shift instead of a 10-hour shift. Started that in January simply because we were seeing a lot of folks carrying over because of shift shortages. And no one can escape the, the sickness, the vacations, the resignations and termination. All of which, the five open positions that I have now have resulted from resignations and termination. Unexpected resignations, people move on, one's moving to the railroad and the other one decided, I think, to do construction or real estate or something like that. So again, unexpected issues, but emails have been sent, directives have been sent, not only by myself, but Captain Gardner. I am humbly asking that you guys assist, help me with the overtime line item by, I guess the official term would be overrun. And I'm in hopes that you can.
For purposes of discussion, what's the, I'm looking here, amounts?
Through 21, there's 24 pays in the fiscal year through 21 pays. The total deficit is $314,376.3, which to, which represents 218.3% of budget. There are three pays remaining and three holidays if the council agrees to duty. Just as a reminder to the council, last June, June the 2nd, you did approve an infusion of overtime into the sheriff's budget in the amount of $280,000. $60,000 of that he provided from the gun fund. Sheriff, could you provide any money from the gun fund towards overtime this year?
No, sir, I can't.
Current balance in the gun fund is $133,965.32 as of yesterday. So you're looking at $314,000 plus three more pays plus holidays. So you're talking probably an infusion of about $400,000. And it would have to come from your contingency, your remaining contingency fund balance is So that will take more than half of your remaining contingency for this, for this
On our contingency, how, what's our, what do we need for carryover?
Well, you know, I'm always concerned about unencumbered fund balance. This certainly is, will, will impact that. We projected your unencumbered fund balance to be slightly more than 5.5 million for next year. We've been working hard to get the, the ARPA reimbursements in place, and as you know, we sold bonds day before yesterday to reimburse ourselves for the LED lighting. So we've been working with bond council and the bond underwriters. We go to closing on June the 1st on those bonds. So we've already gotten the bills, we, we sent the bills in, Tracy's not here. We sent the bills over to bond council yesterday so that as soon as we go to closing and that money's deposited with West Banko, we can get a reimbursement for a million, we can, almost a million six. Long story short, this, this, this could impact your unencumbered fund balance, but I, I think you'll be, you've got no choice, the money's already been spent. It's not like the sheriff is here asking for $400,000 more that, that hasn't been spent. It's just a matter of taking it out of one pocket and putting it in, in the other. So you, you only have two choices, either make him hold or let it ride and let the, the department fund show a deficit balance, which will show up on the, in your audit report next year.
I'm looking forward to that.
No.
I make a motion that we approve the request and take it out of the contingency and move it forward.
Request for 400?
400,000.
400,000. Will that cover the next two pays or, you know, you anticipate more?
It should be okay.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed, motion carries, sir.
I very much appreciate it, gentlemen, thank you very much.
Okay. Next up, Public Service Water District, increased discussion and action for Mr. Davis, you got a little comment?
As the council's aware, last Thursday, you held a series, actually two, not a series, I guess two to make up a series.
One over and another.
It was more than one, but less than three. You held two, two public hearings on the proposed water rate increase resolution that you had received from the water district that was delivered to your office on April 11th, 2023. As you know, the, the water rate increase is being faced in, posed, being faced in over a five-year period. You have 45 days from the time that you received the resolution. The resolution was passed on the 10th, you received it on the 11th. So you have until no later than Thursday, May 25th, 2023, to make a decision on the proposed resolution. We did have, as I mentioned, two public hearings last week, one at 11 and one at 6. We had one, we had one constituent speak at the 11 o'clock hearing and one at the 6 o'clock hearing. The primary objection to, as you know, to the proposed rate was the change in the, in the bulk rate. After the, the hearing, the day after the hearing, I did have some correspondence with Jim, explained to him that, that it's appeared to be that the consensus from, from the council was that they, they understood the need for the increase and they were in support of the increase that the, that the big stumbling block appeared to be the, the pretty substantial increase in the bulk rate. I talked to Hoy, Singleton, I guess last Monday, this past Monday and Monday, and Hoy indicated that the district was in agreement to remove any reference to the bulk rate, which seems to address any, any and all concerns that were expressed that last week. So the council can, and I've given you, Hoy sent me the, the, the proposed order this morning with the, with the removal of the reference to the bulk rate. The effective date for the adjustment is, is left blank and I gave you all hard copies of that. Unfortunately, I reset, I wasn't able to give it to you, we just started the meeting. The initial adjustment would become effective 45 days from the passage of the, the new rate increase by the council. So if you feel comfortable, and I know Hoy and, and Greg and, and Jim are here today to answer any questions, you can, you can adopt it today, you can table it, so you can look over what I provided to you, but, and I have put it on for next week's agenda if you need it. It's either make a decision this week or delay it, make a decision next week.
Thank you.
Okay.
Boy, you have, Boy or Greg, you have anything you wanna?
Jim, come on up.
I would like to pin it after all the bulk rate.
Come on, come on up, Hoy. You're walking well on that knee.
But with regard to the bulk rate, all those, you usually have a few that avail themselves, sworn in the pool and so forth. They're going to get a rate increase, they're just going to fall through the tariff just like every other.
Which is the way it is now.
Yeah, which is the way it is now. So all we did to the tariff that we presented to you in April was delete any reference to a separate bulk rate. We just deleted, I think it's too large.
So they'll, they'll fill their trucks up at the, at the fire hydrants or how they-
Well, or at a meter. I, I, I don't, I don't think I'm speaking out of a school. Mr. Taylor, I think, is working on a solution and we're kind of working with him where he can get his trucks in at a location where it will be safe and so forth and turn around and all that and be able to tap into a meter.
In south, perfectly.
Uh, yes, it's, it's going to be somewhere south of the city. I, I think that's where he's wanting, you know, that would be his choice.
Sure. It could be at a power hydrant or it could be at another location.
Yeah, hopefully it would be in a meter. The fire hydrants are almost always used when you have a big contractor, one of these large, and they're out, may need water right there. You've got these meters, you can put on a fire hydrant. There's a lot of administrative costs that goes along with that, putting it in and putting it out and leaving it all that stuff.
When you say at a meter, what does that mean?
Well, at a, at a, at a place, they, he would, he-
But it's, it's, like, it's not what it's used to, it's not a bulk, I'm just not understanding-
It's not the bulk.
Where these meter locations are or what they are, is it, like, it's not a residential meter, right?
It wouldn't be a residential, which would not be large enough. You'd have to have a larger meter to be able to fill the truck up and reason it out.
Right. So there are locations that have-
Yeah, there potentially are.
We have portable, special meters that can be used at any fire.
Oh, okay.
Effectively, it, it could be used at any fire hydrant. Now, presumably-
Accessibility.
We do try to limit the amount of fire hydrants that's used out because you want them where there are big lines and things at this stage, so they can have the proper flood. I would, I would point out that what we're doing here by removing the bulk rate- I would, I would point out that what we're doing here by removing the bulk rate is effectively treating it as it's being treated right now. Currently, it goes through our, our rate tariff for bulk customers as it does at any other customer, and that's what we're proposing. We've removed the bulk rate structure from the tariff. If you remember, that was listed in some of our handouts as new because it didn't exist before and we're, we are removing that. The separate issue of a bulk filling station open for public use is something that, that is going to take us longer to probably resolve, but I've been given other reasons that we probably need to try to seek a resolution to that and find a place where we can open up a bulk storage station. We just haven't identified where it's going to be or how we're going to implement that. But at least the initial situation as far as the rate shock would be eliminated because we're just treating it as it is right now through the normal tariff, the water tariff. So it will be affected by stages, just like everyone else's.
And it's billed once a month to the, to the poller?
It's like every, you gotta bill once a month.
That's correct.
Everybody else.
And once their meters are combat. Okay. Okay. Eddie, welcome back. We need a motion or do you want to table it for one more week or we want to take care of it?
I'm satisfied with this. I'll make a motion to adopt the, the water-
Water rate increase?
Yeah, water rate increase for the Berkeley County Public Service Water District.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Oh, that's with the bulk rate removed.
With the bulk rate removed. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed, motion carries. All right.
I will put the documents to you, sign.
So when, when do you expect that to go out as far as the billing, 45 days later?
Yes, I, I, so the effective date will be, I think, even the 2nd or 3rd. So for services regular law right after that.
Sounds good.
There's, Mr. President, there's, there's a lot, a lot of people that has done a lot of work to get this to this point. And I know that Greg and Hoy and Jim in particular have, you know, carried the bulk of that load. And I want to, I want to personally thank them for this approach of being able to stretch this out over a five year period. I appreciate the work that John Hardy, our delegate John Hardy, has done with the IJDC, Senator Blair with the contributions from the governor's office, you know, all those things, everybody's work to pull those together for the benefit of the rate payer of Berkeley County. And I thank you for your work and this, this is a big deal for this county to get the water system upgraded to where it needs to be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eddie?
And on a secondary note, we pointed Ruby and Lynn to another term on the work.
Very good, very good.
Eddie, we're going to take a break until Clint gets here.
Okay, we're back in session and next on the agenda is Clint Hogman, which is being represented by... Where's he at? Oh, he's outside. Okay, here he comes.
Mark.
Mark. Being represented by Mark with the Solid Waste Authority, a presentation of awards, school recycling contest. Operation Green Lead. Come on up, B.
Mark Barney is a Hedgesville alum. He's also the principal of South Middle School.
That's correct.
His number one job is keeping his granddaughter safe over there, so... He's doing a great job of that.
I was hopeful our, some of our kids from South Middle would be here and we're the closest probably. Aint you know it's pretty close, but, and we're not here yet. But anyway. My name's Mark Barney. I am the vice chairman of the Burke County Solid Waste Authority. I'm also the principal of South Middle School, South Middle School participates in this program. Be recognized here today as well. Mr. Grindell, if you can join me. Brown. Several years ago, I've been on the Solid Waste Authority for about 10 years now. Several years ago, we engaged in a partnership with Apple Valley Waste on trying to enhance our visibility in the school system, trying to work in the school system, trying to educate people. As a board member, I work hard to try to say, "Yeah, we can do this Clint Hogman, but we need to educate people on it." So, trying to bring recycling in our program at some level into the schools. At that point in time, we had a lot of totes. Apple Valley had shifted their focus on how they were going to do curbside and we said, "Hey, you think we can use those totes in our program we want to do in the schools?" So that spawned Operation Green Lead, which we've been doing for several years now. This year, we added Hedgesville Elementary School. They're represented here. And so we're here today to recognize the first, second, and third place winners. First place with about 600 totes of recycling taking the Grapevine Road, led by Neg Partington. And I asked her for names of these kids, thinking I was going to acknowledge four or five kids. What a tremendous effort. She brought 30 kids that participate in this program. So first place, St. Jared. Second place, that's us, South Middle. A group of kids that I really want to acknowledge them at a high level. They spend a lot of their day together and hopefully they walk in the door as I'm speaking on them. They spend a lot of their day together and sometimes you listen to them and say, "Man, these kids don't get along at all." But when it comes time to put their heads together on collecting recycling around our building... Alright.
Just talk a little slower. We'll get it on camera. Might help us understand better if you talk slower. Does everybody stand up when they walk in and clap for them? I hear them.
Yeah, they're, uh, they can be heard. They can be heard.
We're good.
They're on time.
Huh?
Yeah.
Right on the money.
We're not late.
Maybe I should, maybe I should have stayed on break just a little bit longer.
And so this group that just walked in the door, they at South Middle School are responsible for pretty much running our program. Other than getting the materials to the recycling center, and like I said, I need to speak to it while they're in here. You listen to these guys around the building and they don't necessarily always get along. But when it comes time to organizing the recycling, getting the recycling together, getting it to the staging area where someone's going to take it out the door, they work hard together. They do amazing work, put their heads together and get it done. South Middle School, second place. They are led by Michelle Barnhart, who's over there against the wall hiding away from us. She, she coordinates and leads them to what they're going to do. So thank you Ms. Barnhart for all you do there to coordinate with these guys. And in third place this year, she's sitting all the way in the back. Principal Melissa Holland at Hedgesville Elementary School. They, Ms. Holland reached out to me and said, "Talk to me about this program you guys run and how you do it at South Middle School." And I told her and left the conversation, haven't heard back from her since. And they joined up and they've done a nice job and they, they are third place this year.
So what did, what?
So, the Solid Waste Authority presents a cash award for the top three winners. And today, our relationship with Apple Valley very strong. They are presenting a gift card to each of the three schools on behalf of Apple Valley Waste.
Okay.
How do you want to coordinate pictures?
We'll do one at a time, first, second, third, and then we'll do a group. That's okay. You want to give the presentation amounts or is that? Or the res, or?
Lynn Lashley, secretary at the office, is here. Do 500, 300, 200. But the checks are in her hands and they're supposed to be here with her.
Oh, okay.
She might be walking in the door anytime.
Walking in the door?
But we can go ahead and get a photo. Say, I'd say bring your first place group up first.
We have executive session.
We do have executive session for real estate and for economic development.
Okay. Let's just take a break, get some photos and then we'll go from there.
Can we ask, can Mark, can we ask a question to the students that are here? You live, raise your hand. If you do that at your home. Pretty impressive.
Pretty impressive. Over here's one. Steve, over here's one.
There's another one, man.
What are you doing?
Oh, yeah.
And I get in trouble if I put it in the wrong can. How about you all?
No, I'm the charge of it.
I'm, I'm holding one in my house.
Ain't happening. Ain't happening.